We'll call this meeting of the Houston County Planting Commission to order. We have four conditional use permit applications to deal with. The first one is Sean and Chelsea Sen from Jefferson Township, building a dwelling on less than forty acres in an agricultural district. Aaron?
Please take notice that an application has been made by Sean and Chelsea Sen of Caledonia, Minnesota, and Tammy Dearson of Caledonia, Minnesota for a conditional use permit to build a dwelling on less than forty acres in an agricultural district in Jefferson Township. Said applicants standing and making the application are as holders and owners of an enforceable option to purchase full interest in described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Justice Center basement, Caledonia, Minnesota on Thursday, April 20th. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application advertised on April 5th. If you look at the map up here, it shows the proposed parcel would be split off of the existing parcel, and the smaller rectangle in green would be the location of the proposed structure. You had the information provided in your packets. The township and the ten nearest property owners were notified. No comments were received. The parcel itself would be 2.3 acres. Current landowner is a co-signature to the application as well. The ordinance sets forth several requirements for non-farm dwellings that this proposal satisfies all of those requirements. Would I ask that the applicants add anything they wish to add to my overview?
Everything here except for, it would be the west along the pasture there. That line would just go straight across from the corner. It would be straight-
Oh, this?
Off the corner of the fence line to the north or south. Yep, that would move up just a touch.
So, something like that?
Yep. It's gonna be a perfect rectangle. And if in the application we got, they were trying to go for a survey being done, I was just wondering if there was any way we could get away with that, without that. I've got an attorney on it drawing up. I can't remember how he called it.
Meats and bones?
A legal description from a lawyer, from the north and west. It's already right on a corner. I mean, with his legal description, there's really no discrepancy. I can't fight nothing. I can't move nothing.
This mapping does not have sections and quarter sections, but the west line and the south line are on quarter section lines, I believe.
Right. With the legal description, I just don't see the reason to, I can't say waste the $1,200, $1,400 for a survey when I have a legal description and there's really no reason.
Is it a square or a rectangle?
A rectangle.
Okay. And it starts from a known fixed point?
Right.
So you're saying you're gonna buy 2.3 acres more or less?
What's that?
You buy 2.3 acres more or less, I mean, it won't be exactly?
Right. Well, with the legal description, that's what it comes up to be was 2.1, 2.2 after we cut that line straight across. It was 310 feet by 290, I believe, so it's almost, actually almost a square.
And you're definitely 50 feet off the property line?
Yep. Actually, we moved the house to the north a touch with the garage and everything. We're actually pushing the 80, 90 foot mark, and I may move it further yet depending on the lay of the land. I'm trying to keep that field up above so that later down the road, I can put that back into crops instead of mowing and utilizing the land.
How soon do you plan to build?
If I get this, hopefully next month.
Okay. Need to dig a well and sewer and everything?
Yep. And I actually already have, the septic is into, in its works, getting drawn up and into the state. They have a proposed spot for that, and that was done along that fence line 15 feet off the fence line, I think, because there's supposed to be 10, I believe, is the variance. We moved it to 15, so we know we're off the lot line enough.
Anybody on the board have any other questions? Any public input? Hearing done, I would ask Aaron to do the evaluation.
There's proposed findings contained in the staff reports that you received, a copy of which is in the public folder near the door. If there are no objections, I would suggest that the board accept the findings as proposed in the staff report, and we could avoid reciting them.
Did we answer the question about the survey?
That's not one of the findings. That would be, that's a condition I'm recommending, so I guess we could get to that if you wanted. I don't know what we want to do first. Do we want to talk about the findings, or do we want to talk about conditions? We don't need conditions if we don't approve the findings.
I think the findings are first.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the findings as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to accept the findings, any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So, your reports contain two recommended conditions, the first being the one you all should be very familiar with, that the permit shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations, and the second being that a certificate of survey be completed by a licensed surveyor is required for the newly created parcel. A certificate of survey completed by a licensed surveyor is required for the newly created parcel. I'm recommending that simply that's a standard policy in the zoning office. It's the preference of the zoning office and the auditor. However, I wouldn't be strongly opposed if the board viewed that differently, I suppose. It's, I'm not looking at whether it's on an existing public land survey line, or whether it follows the contour of a cornfield. I would make that recommendation anytime we're creating a new parcel.
The rest of the property surrounding this is yours?
It's all owned by her family.
Okay. And you get along?
It's actually, where we are building is part of the actual homestead of the farm, so we're trying to, it's all gonna stay. And I did talk to pollings who butt up along that, and they have no judgment against, they don't see if we're having a survey or anything.
Well, I'm a firm believer in surveys, but I can see your point, really.
Because we've already got a lawyer hired to-
You're gonna lay it out, measure it?
Lay it out, yeah.
I like the fact that they've got established lines already on two sides, you said?
Right, yep.
Then I think it's safe to assume that the lawyer may will draw out coordinates or make it.
Yeah. That's true.
This is not required in the ordinance, it's just, it's a recommendation, staff-
It's a recommendation, yeah. All the departments that have, that work within land use all prefer this to their point. If there were a time when it weren't required, it would likely be on this type of parcel and not odd shaped parcel.
Yep.
If you do just the legal description, will some kind of markers be put in to?
There is a marker already in place.
Two of them, but will the other, if it's a rectangle, will the other two be put in?
I guess I could.
It wouldn't necessarily be required. If you ever sold the property, if the buyer or the neighboring properties, I suppose, wanted those corner points put in, they could start from those two points and turn the 90s and run the distance and put the points in at that point in time. Since we're dealing with family, I don't know as it's a big issue.
And like I said, it's right on the 40 line. I mean, there's really no contesting 290 feet to the north and 300 east-west. It is what it is.
So you need a motion to approve the recommendations in order to grant?
We need a motion to grant the CP with whatever conditions we want to, yeah. The survey is not a part of it yet. If you don't include that in the motion, it's not there.
I move that we recommend the cup be issued with the condition that the permit comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations, and that'd be it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
Does that include the findings?
The findings, we've already approved the findings.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have Nicole and Jamin Ramsey, Brownsville Township, to build a dwelling on less than forty acres in an agricultural district.
Please take notice that an application has been made by Nicole and Jamin Ramsey of Brownsville, Minnesota, for a conditional use permit to build a dwelling on less than forty acres in an agricultural district in Brownsville Township on the following premises as parcels within Brownsville Township. The applicants standing and making the application are as fee owners of described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Justice Center basement or nearby Caledonia, Minnesota on Thursday, April 20th. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application as advertised on April 5th. I'll turn this site up here. If you were here early, you may have seen this site already, and that they were also seeking a variance. There's an existing building on site. It's a garage with some unpermitted living quarters within it. Applicants have been cooperating with the county to bring the property back into compliance. A permitted dwelling, permitted septic are part of what we've asked them to do and what they're applying to do. The ordinance sets forth criteria for non-farm dwellings. This application with the variances that it was granted earlier tonight satisfies those I think it's, I'll turn it over to the Ramsies and see if you want to add to anything I've said.
Just where the house is being proposed, located there, close to the property line is because of the power lines and how they run through that property. There's one that is established in the center would be 20, I suppose, 20 feet from the back of the proposed dwelling there that cannot be moved. So that's, that's why we had the home placed where it would, where he has it, you know.
And your location is already, reducing those setbacks, that's been done, so now I guess it's just building a home, generally speaking.
So when do you plan to start building the home?
As soon as I would be permitted to.
So what's the other building being used for right now?
Right now, it's a garage, and it has living quarters in it like a cabin. And sometimes we stay up there.
So you say it's being brought into compliance. What do you mean, Aaron?
Well, we laid some options out for them in terms of curing that. One would be apply to transition the status of the garage to a dwelling. The other would be apply to build a new dwelling, and I guess the third would be remove or discontinue use of it as a, I understand to be used as a sort of a temporary dwelling. It's not a full-time residence. So I think when he says cabin, he means that it's occupied in a transient manner.
So if you build a home, you're gonna move out of, you're not gonna be?
No, it won't be occupied. You know, it could generally be, I guess, a guest house.
Is that?
I mean, if it was-
As long as it's not being done commercially, there's no, there's no rule that says you can't have, you know, a TV and a couch and a sink in your garage, provided that you have the appropriate system to deal with the wastewater. If you have water, they have an unpermitted septic there. I believe the plan is to turn that into a holding tank. If they are gonna continue to use it, they would have to, in some way, bring it into compliance, so it would-
Is that, you understand that?
Yes.
I had a question with regard to the driveway. There's a permanent easement as far as crossing the neighbor's property. A driveway doesn't, is that on your property, or is it on the adjoining property? Is this on yours?
Yeah, they own this parcel here, this parcel here, and this parcel here.
Okay.
Does the driveway meet slope requirements?
It is teetering there. It will have to, and they understand that the site work would have to bring that into 12% grades. It's right around 12% now, if I-
Yeah, it was probably a half percent.
It's, it's very, it could be achieved, I guess is what I should say.
You agree to do that?
I do.
You agree to bring it into compliance?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And so you plan to put a holding tank for the garage, but you're gonna have another septic for your new house?
Correct.
And the well is accepted, or the well is gonna meet new approvals too?
That is the state of Minnesota's business, I guess. Houston County does not. Now, they're required to comply with the state laws, but we don't actively administer wells.
Any other questions from the board?
Aaron, with the, with the holding tank, there'll be a contract with a pumper, I assume?
I don't, Rick Frank issues those, but I believe that for holding tanks, he requires a pumping contract, yes.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion-
Wait, any public input, any public comment? Then, well, let's first go to the findings.
packets they were distributed, you have proposed findings in them. There's a copy available in the public folder by the door. If there are no objections, I would put to the board that the findings as presented be accepted.
I would move that we accept the findings as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to accept the findings as presented. Further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Should the permit be granted, staff recommends the following condition: the permit shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations.
What if we added a condition that you agree to bring the existing building up to standards, up into compliance? I mean, that's part of the whole process here, right?
Yeah, so the non-compliance that remains would be the septic and the, I guess, just use as a dwelling if indeed that's occurring. So the building of this dwelling would take care of the latter. The former would be a requirement of the building permit, I guess, but that's not a-
Wouldn't have to be a condition?
I guess I would agree that that might be a, I would agree with your recommendation.
Okay. To add that as a condition?
Correct.
That you bring that existing property into compliance, along with building the new house?
Agreed.
Will you guys use that as you're building your house?
Yes, yes.
So, how soon do you plan to put a holding tank in there, if you're gonna be living there while you're building your house?
I would say within a month.
Well, it's got a septic now, isn't it?
Well, what it has is has a tank with a drain field, so I understand what they do is they simply remove the output, so then it's just a tank.
Yeah, okay, and pump it.
And pump it, okay?
Correct.
Well, if you're gonna be living there, pump it.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I move that the, we recommend that this cup be approved with those two conditions, that the permit, that you follow all state, federal, and local laws, and that you bring the existing garage into compliance as a living quarter, and have a holding tank and get it pumped on a regular basis. Okay? Okay, the driveway. Third, bring the driveway into compliance so it meets the state or county requirements, which is 12% slope. Okay?
Is your motion ready?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded, and just from my understanding, is there any discussion? From my understanding, when you say bring the building into compliance, and then you said as a residence, I mean, it's not as a residence, it's a temporary.
Right, as a temporary residence, but you're gonna leave the bathroom in there, are you? And you're gonna stay there, right?
Are you saying while building, or after?
Yeah, are you? Is that what you're saying, that you're gonna stay there while you're building your new house?
Yeah, not, probably not. You know, throughout the entire week, I would say.
But I think if you're living there, your sewer needs to be brought up today.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm adding that as a condition.
Okay. But it isn't to allow it to be used as a residence after the home is built?
No, there can only be one residence here.
Just for my clarification. Any other discussion?
So, I just wanna, the wording of the, of the extra conditions, existing building be brought into compliance with the ordinance, is that?
Primarily as it relates to the sewer, as I understand it, yeah.
Okay, and then what, what is the, what is our expectation in terms of timelines for that?
Right, prior, if you're gonna start living there, the tank needs to be set up. So I'd say if you're gonna start building, it needs to happen before you start building if you're gonna be living there.
Good.
Okay. So maybe prior to the issuance of the zoning permit?
I would say so, yeah.
Okay. And you know what I'm gonna do is, what if we have that as a standalone condition?
Okay.
Aaron, prior to the, prior to the vote, what are the, are there four conditions?
There are now, yeah.
There are now four.
Okay. First, it's a standard condition we're all familiar with. Secondly, that the existing building be brought into compliance with the ordinance. That will, that will be completely finished when they finish their new home. Three, that the driveway must meet the requirements of the ordinance, and again, I'm assuming that means when they're finished with their new home. And then that the existing septic be brought into compliance with the ordinance prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, so they would have probably their septic designer for their new home first remedy that.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, Darren Meyer of DeSue Holsteins Spring Grove Township, expand a feedlot from 147.8 animal units to 553.7 animal units, consisting of dairy cattle, and to build a manure storage structure with a capacity over 20,000 gallons. Right? You wanna do the other one first?
No, that's, that's the right, I thought I had it the other way around.
We can do it that way if you want to.
That's the incorrect one. Yeah, I just thought we ran the other one.
So I will read the hearing notice, and I'll maybe ask Darren to provide an overview, and I'm gonna pass out some additional materials that have come in. Please take notice that an application has been made by Darren Meyer of DeSue Holsteins for a conditional use permit to expand a feedlot from 147.8 animal units to 553.7 animal units, consisting of dairy cattle, and to build a manure storage structure with a capacity over 20,000 gallons. The facility will consist of the following components: an existing 105-foot by 130-foot freestyle barn, an existing 75-foot by 125-foot concrete manure storage, existing 50-foot by 71-foot barn, existing 35-foot by 120-foot milking parlor and holding area, proposed 113-foot by 393-foot freestyle barn, and a proposed 260-foot by 200-foot by 12-foot manure, concrete manure storage area, all in Spring Grove Township. Said applicant standing and making the application is as fee owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Justice Center basement, Caledonia, Minnesota on Thursday, April 20th. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application, like the others that was advertised on April 5th. As I said, Darren, do you want to provide an overview when I shuffle papers here?
Sure. In a nutshell, what it is, basically an expansion of what's there, obviously. Freestyle barn, six-row freestyle barn, push-off, should be 100% containment facility, engineered pit, 565 heifers in that barn there, additional. Note from Aaron's explanation, the milking parlor and holding area is non-operational. I quit milking cows up there. The existing barns that are there, basically converting them for a capacity of 177 heifers.
So what's the dimension of that barn again, Darren? What's that?
112 by- 112 by 392.
Okay. And you say the water obviously does not go into the pit. It's, so how do you, that's a lot of, is that close to an acre? Or how big, how much is that? That's a...
An acre is $43,000.
Oh, yeah, no, it wouldn't be, no, it wouldn't be. But at any rate, the water coming off the barn, that'll be a fair amount of water coming off the barn.
Yeah.
Where's that going? Is that...
Well, it'd be going north and south off the barn, obviously. It'd be a centerline roof on it.
Good.
Has to be culverted back over into the county road ditch where the runoff's going now.
Have you, do you know how close you are to bedrock there?
I don't know for sure, but I would assume it's 20-plus feet.
You think it's that far down?
Yeah, the other one that did it, my brother's farmer, he lives there, we were 20-some feet over there, various depths, like 25 to 20 is what we were over there. We did soil borings. I assume it's the same soil profile.
You got the same elevation, you think?
Uh, yeah, maybe even a little bit higher over here. It's pretty close.
And so, we heard quite a bit of what was said at the Board of Adjustment, but the idea of moving it out this way, what's the objection to that? I mean, other than take prime farm land, is that your main objection?
Well, two things. One is you take prime farm ground, the other, I think it's going to get undoable because of the climb and the hill. I mean, if you look at the top of the hill...
No, I mean, coming, let's see, south, coming south.
So, I can't go south of it because I get in the diameter of that sinkhole.
South and east then? If you go east, get away from the sinkhole.
Can't go east because the hill climbs. If you see the top of the graphical map, how high it climbs out there.
Goes up how many feet?
I can't...
12, 10, 12, 10? It doesn't say what the top one is there. But anyway, building it out on top out there, you think is not an option, huh?
No, I don't.
So, there you've got a 10-foot increase over 385 feet.
You've got a 10-foot increase, and you've got a 12-foot manure pit. Top of the hill is going to end up 22 feet over the bottom of your manure pit.
So, the manure pit is now posed, that's all above ground, or you got some of it below ground?
It's below ground.
Oh, it's all below ground?
Yeah, your building will come out on grade to the top of the 12 feet. Basically, it'll be a slab pushed into the 12-foot pit.
So, what's the requirement from the bottom of the pit from bedrock with that kind of volume? Is it not 10 feet?
What is it, Aaron?
I believe it's five, but I...
I think it's six, and it's six in Iowa, I won't say from Minnesota, but...
With concrete, it's less than with other...
I think the closer you get to bedrock, the more you got to put into the bottom of the pit in terms of liners and all that stuff, is it, whatever the requirements are.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's a minimum where it doesn't matter how much liner you put in, you can't do it. You know what I'm saying?
Right, and it depends on the size of the pit and the size of the animals, the number of animals involved. That's also what he's...
I think manure storage...
We need to, that's another thing we need to research, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the requirements for manure storage are dependent on animal units, but I think once you have manure storage, the requirement for the storage is the same regardless of how many animal units go in it.
Okay.
During the hearing from the Board of Adjustment, you discussed drainage ditch, and you talked about putting a culvert under the building.
Correct.
Now, that would basically be draining what area? Basically, the old farmstead?
Correct.
Everything else flows to the south?
Um, you can see the present waterway where the break is.
Right.
Yes.
So, basically, you'd just be draining the old farmstead?
Correct.
Under the building to the?
Correct.
Waterway by the road.
Correct. The amount of drainage wouldn't increase by what I would do.
Right. You're just eliminating the waterway, that's what you're doing.
Correct.
I tend to disagree a little bit, because if you put up a building, that drainage does not, when it falls right now, it has a chance to perk. Comes off the roof, you're going to increase the volume because that perk area is gone, so that's what's going to go underneath, in the drainage that goes underneath the building. So, there'll be some additional runoff compared to what is typical right now.
Additional runoff, not additional acreage, yes.
Right, not acreage, just the volume, additional volume will be there because of no perking.
And the water that falls on top of the pit would go in the pit, though?
Yes.
Okay. Is that open?
Actually, I think you'd actually have less runoff in there because you're going to be containing everything that falls in the pit, which is going to be more square footage probably than the barn, or as much. You know what I'm saying?
Because it's open, yeah.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Because the way they got them, any, or the way you can get them approved, the only way you can get them approved, like I said at the other hearing, is that if a cow walks on it, a cow poops on it, you contain it. So, the whole slab and the whole manure pit itself would be 100% contained. There'd be no runoff at all off of them.
You say that the manure pit is going to be below ground. Is it going to be below ground all sides, or is, say, the east side going to be a little bit elevated? I mean, the ground does drop off down to the drainage ditch.
The elevation of the manure pit is basically going to be the same as the east end of the barn.
Right.
And then, all the sides, obviously, the way we've been building them in the past, there's probably two feet of the concrete that's exposed over the back fill, so everything obviously drains away from them as far as rainwater.
Is that, are those lines, Aaron, is that two-foot increments, or what is that on the...
Those, I believe, are 10 to 10. Yes, two-foot increments.
Two-foot.
1200, 12, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10.
So, from one corner, from one, from the west side of the manure pit to the east side of the manure pit, it's eight to 10-foot difference?
Yeah, I can tell you that. It's right there, ground slope, 3.7% elevation, yeah, it's about an 8% difference in elevation.
How many feet?
I'm sorry, eight feet, eight-foot difference in elevation.
So, if we're meeting the floor of the barn, some of that, all I'm saying is, some of the concrete is going to be above ground then on the far side?
Correct.
Okay. And that will be addressed by whoever's engineering the pit.
Correct.
Is that planned in place?
No, it's like, multiple permits are necessary for this, as we touched on in the Board of Adjustment hearing. The applicant here is, he's choosing to seek his county permits first, and that there's substantial costs associated with having a pit engineered, and he would like to have it engineered specifically for the location that's already approved. The Board of Adjustment tabled this, so that some of that information can come in. I'm hoping to get those applications, receive them prior to making a decision on this application.
Do you also have to get an MPCA water usage permit?
Yes.
You do?
So, as I understand it, that review and the study that's, we're looking at, will that address the CARST access or issue as far as that's concerned?
I'm researching options for review that's above and beyond what's standardly required as a standard for your CARST review for your feedlot permit. There's a basic review that's already required. There are things that can be done above and beyond that. They may or may not be available around here, so I'm working with the PCA to see what options are in place. If I found an option that felt appropriate, I would recommend that as a condition of this permit. I don't have anything to recommend tonight.
I mean, it's just somewhat of a concern, there's a sinkhole that's been there a long time, now a new sinkhole in the area of the farm that's developed. It'd be just, I think, a good thing to know before, just what is underneath there?
Yeah, there used to be an expert in that area in Winona County, who's no longer here, but it was standard practice for them to do that type of review before any permitting of liquid manure storage.
Because if you go to the site and you look at the fossoms across the way, there's a sand hill that comes up right behind their place. I mean, there's a knob that comes up.
Within reason, if we could find something that was reasonably economical, I think it would be a prudent thing to do, to have that type of review done before placing this, just based on the two that are there. And then, if you zoom out and look at, say, a two-mile periphery around the site, you see clusters north-south that are mapped.
Knowing what's underneath there would have a bearing as far as how it's engineered or how it's designed, I would assume.
Yeah, I would assume so.
I understand that the manure is contained, but I think I'm concerned that if another sinkhole develops underneath that containment, then won't that crack it? I mean, won't that make it possible to crack it, and then it won't be contained?
I guess I don't, if you're asking me, I don't know the answer to that, I can't imagine it's...
I'd like to know what's under there.
I think the other thing, sinkholes may or not, but my experience with sinkholes is that they have a propensity to develop in a waterway, or close to a waterway, because there's saturation there. And that saturation with the water going down, I've had sinkholes show up in my waterways. So, yeah, at any rate, I think, I think we need to actually look at it. Actually, Darren, it's part of our ordinance that the Feedlot Advisory Committee make an onsite visit. So, I kind of agree that I think, I think we need to follow the ordinance, we need to have an onsite visit, we need to talk more about this. We need to, we need to really understand what MPCA requires, we need to understand this CARST geology thing around and what's required by MPCA. There's certain requirements at 500 feet, 500 head and over, and we need to, actually, everyone on the planning commission needs to be brought up to date on that.
Are you checking like EEW?
We don't know.
Okay.
If that's required, but that needs to be researched.
Got you.
So, we can move on? Can I ask for public comment at this point, or do you want?
Of, on one hand, it may be useful...
A lot of people here that are interested in what we're talking about.
Right, it may be useful to see what types of concerns people have, and that could affect how we would proceed.
And they've all been here for the entire evening, the duration of this meeting, but I think they're all aware that we're going to postpone a decision until the next meeting. But I'd like to get their input. Does anybody have any comment with regard to this project? Mr. Storley's coming up first, and then you can. Well, let Mr. Storley come up. He's got the farthest distance to go.
I'm Richard Storley, neighbor to the north of this concerned areas. We've had a bit of concern about our groundwater things, and when things get out of hand, we have had, we have good water, and we have neighbors and people that are down through this waterway area that are very concerned about the same thing. And so, I would like to at least agree really hard that you guys do visit this. I think there's another thing too, for the closest assist to a township road. I think that needs to be addressed a little bit and to be concerned about, because it's a long time, when this is being built, it's a permanent thing that is going to affect this whole township area, as far as their roads, and also what the traffic that is going to be used to haul feed in and out, and also the product, the manure product. So, I think some of these things should be really looked at and addressed, and it would be very helpful if you guys would check out this site.
Thank you.
I'm Dean Meyer, and I got a few things here, and get a little off the subject here, the economy and everything else, but I got some things put together here, and I'm one that likes to educate, so just bear with me here. It's whether, I'm going to read this off, whether you make a living farming or simply enjoy the fruits of agriculture. We all have a vested interest in events like this, because every cow we have in this state translates to dollars and cents for our economy. In Wisconsin, the expression "cash cow" really means something. Farmers generate about $60 million a year in the state, with the dairy industry representing $27 million, billion dollars. This is a big number. In fact, it's hard to put your head around it. So, let's shrink it down to something a bit that we can bite off. Each individual cow creates about $21,000 in the economy within the home community, actually, according, this is according to the University of Wisconsin. $21 million, or $21,000 each cow generates that puts back in the community. Some of the spending is fairly obvious. Dairy farmers invest a lot in feed, equipment, supplies, environment specialists, and other vendors, but the ripple effect beyond the, goes beyond the vendors and suppliers. We'll just take for instance, Rosedale Dairy is a big dairy over there in Wisconsin. They employ 80 people, and they create 40 to 50 jobs to vendors and other companies, all of whom are spending money at our gas stations, our grocery stores, our restaurants, and our retailers. Whether a dairy farmer sells, whenever a dairy farmer sells a dollar's worth of milk, it generates to $3 in the community for every $1 million of US milk sales to support 17 jobs in our community, according to the Midwest Dairy Association. Along with this, a building such as these add to our tax base, which helps our school districts and everything else. If you don't believe livestock in the area is a good thing, I will just about guarantee you, if we don't have it, these small towns are going to turn into ghost towns. And if you don't believe me, take a drive through corn country sometime and look at these small towns, they're all fallen by the wayside. Here, a number of years ago, I went to Harrod Lake, Minnesota, and I drove into the town, and I seen the windows were boarded up on a lot of the storefronts, and I asked the guy at a little bar, cafe, what the deal was, and he simply said to me, he says, when livestock left, the town died. I know, to most of you, it's not about jobs and tax income, it's about the environment, so let's take a minute to think about this. By having cattle in our area, this means we need hay for feed. We ourselves raise a lot of hay, and most dairy farmers do raise a lot of hay to feed the cows, because it's mostly their main diet. And hay is much better for the environment than corn and beans that go up and down the hills. If you take a drive through the countryside once, you'll see that corn and bean fields, there's a lot of erosion there, and this is not a good thing for our hills. As far as manure hauling, I myself believe manure is a better application to land yet than commercial fertilizer. Sometimes, we have to take a look at some of the things that we do good, instead of everybody criticizing all the farmers that do bad. In my own opinion, cows are a good thing for this community, and I think it's something that we need more of in our area. In conclusion to this, I think a buildings like this are a win-win for all of us. If anybody got any questions for me, shoot them at me.
Well, I think we all agree that dairy industry is important. It is, there's no argument there. We just, as the planning commission, we have to look at where the siding is and what the potential effects would be, but I agree with everything you said, in terms of the economic value of it, obviously.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dean. Anybody else? Hearing nothing from the general public, I will move back to you, Aaron, with regard to findings. to findings.
Similar to the proposal I made for the Board of Adjustment, I would withhold findings if, and recommend that we table until next month, for a variety of reasons. One, to do a feedlot advisory committee site visits, so that members of the planning commission, in their capacity as the feedlot advisory committee, can make a report to the Board of Adjustment, so that the public can view the site on the site. Secondly, so that the applicant can submit his application for his feedlot permit, which will provide more information about his proposal. Thirdly, so that additional research can be done in terms of the requirements for EAWs. It's clear that, you know, the initial research that I've done, and it's only been, you know, a day or two since I've been aware that that was even a consideration, I've reached a different conclusion than him. So, we need to clarify what indeed the process is. We would work with the PCA to do that. And I guess lastly, because the location of the building has recently been changed, so we would update the reports based on the new proposed location.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
What is the capacity of that pit, Darren? How big is it?
Oh, where does it come up to, Aaron? Square footage-wise, a cubic foot, a cubic foot is seven and a half gallons, if you want to do the conversion. So, 200 by 260 by 12 times seven and a half.
Yeah, it's about 4.6 million.
4.6 million gallons? Do you, is that going to be, is that a year's capacity, six months' capacity?
It would be a lot more than a year. That'd probably be like 14, 15 months for those heifers.
So, you plan to pump it once a year, or whatever, time to time, yeah, okay.
You can't really pump it. It's, with heifer manure, we can't pump the other ones that we do that with. It's got to be scooped.
Scooped out, yeah.
It's too thick to pump. You can't pump it.
Okay, and where do you spread that? In that area, general area? You go out on the township road and go over to other property, or where's it going to go?
Well, mostly in that area. There is a pretty big block of ground right there that we farm, 500-plus acres right there interconnected right now.
Okay.
So, there won't be much impact on the road if...
There's going to be impact on the road. I'd be lying if I tell you there isn't. I mean, we're going to use it. In the fall of the year, when we haul, we haul. I mean, steady impact, no. It's not going to be a routine thing.
If you look in the packets that I sent out tonight, the one with the map on the cover, this manure management planner the PCA puts out, does estimations of manure generation. So, there's three in that packet. First one would be page number three. If you look there, it would be manure source number one, and go down, you'd see 1,429 dairy heifers at 1,000 pounds. That's the estimate we're using here. That's estimated to generate 3.6 million gallons of manure in a year. And there's two other scenarios that were ran through that model the next page. So, I should say, actually, that first page, that's what 1,000, that's how many heifers you need for 1,000 animal units. The next page, 715, that's how many you would need for 500 animal units. There, you'd be generating 1.8 million gallons a year. And then the last page is the proposal as it stands with 565, and there you generate 1.4 million gallons a year.
That's a little bit erroneous information too, Aaron, because you're going to need more capacity of that, because that's how much manure you're generating. You're also catching, there are 40 inches of rainwater per year. You're also catching rain, or runoff from your slab and stuff.
Sure, and I'm just talking about how much manure these animals generate, not how much goes into the pit. If you look at the pit, you'd also take into account that you don't get the full 12 feet. There's a foot of freeboard that's required at the top. You're probably not going to get a 100% cleanout, so you can maybe assume that there's going to be a foot at the bottom that's not available for capacity. So, the 4.6 number is probably not a real reflection of actual storage capacity. I think that's what you're trying to show.
Yes, yes.
So, we need a motion to table this until the next meeting in order to come to all the rest of the findings that we need?
I don't see any use in going through them now unless the board is prepared to make a decision. I would recommend a motion to table first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to table the issue until the next meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And finally, we have Darren Meyer of Deshue Holstein's Wilmington Township application.
Please take notice that an application has been made by Darren Meyer of Deshue Holstein's for a conditional use permit to expand a feedlot from 550 animal units to 774 animal units consisting of dairy cattle. The facility will consist of the following components: an existing 108-foot by 232-foot freestyle barn, an existing 116-foot by 232-foot freestyle barn, an existing freestyle barn of unknown dimensions, an existing double-six parlor and holding pen, an existing 30 by 30 barn, an existing slurry store, an existing 180 by 180 by 12-foot concrete manure storage basin, an existing 80 by 80 by 6 concrete manure storage basin, and a proposed 108-foot by 244-foot freestyle barn. And since this was published, I believe, I've been informed, there's one building that is not listed here, and it's a, what is it, a site map here. It would be this barn here, which may also be used in the operation. This is all in Wilmington Township. A hearing on this application will be held at the Easton County Justice Center basement, Caledonia, Minnesota, on Thursday, April 20. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application, again, advertised on April 5. An existing feedlot here, we're looking at a new freestyle barn that will utilize the existing manure storage shown here. The buildings on this site are newer than our mapping capabilities and our typical maps, so we've got good old Google Maps here. Darren, do you want to add some narrative?
Well, basically, what it is, 160 freestalls, the hauls dry cows. It'll be an H pattern, it'll be an extension of the barn right above Aaron's cursor there. Manure pit and everything was engineered and sized for the future of it when I did it. So, basically, it was just backslowed back into 100% containment. Four-year-old sandbed freestyle barn again.
Anybody have questions with regard to this matter?
You use sand for bedding in a barn?
Correct.
Yeah. So, this pit is 2.9 million gallons, but you got 774 animal units you're looking at?
Yes.
So, you'd be pumping that, what, every...
We do it spring and fall right now.
Yeah, spring and fall, right now.
It's never been, we don't fill it with what we have there now.
Okay.
All the parlor and wash water and stuff goes to the slurry store, so there's plenty of storage.
When you haul spring and fall, is that just under 420, is the 420 acres all?
Actually, I believe there's 530 right there, as far as I live, two and a half miles from there. Some goes in my farm, we rent Joe Angan's farm, which is 230 acres, I believe. That's another two and a half miles from there, I believe.
So, there is some town road hauling as far as...
Yeah, but when we haul that farm there, most of all that is hoes. It does not run down the road. Drag line.
Okay, so you're not actually hauling this then?
Vast majority, all goes the drag line there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Does anybody in the audience have any questions or issues? Hearing none. Aaron, if you would do the findings of fact, please.
Packets provided, you had proposed findings in them. A copy of those are findings, proposed findings are available in the public folder. If there's no objections, I would move that we only would cover finding number seven on page number three.
Anybody have any objection to just covering number seven? By consensus, that's what we'll do.
Finding number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. And the reason I'm wanting discussion on this is really revolving around that water appropriations permit, and that's, I'm assuming if you have that for the other side, you have the same.
I do not have one right now for that.
Okay. If, I don't know if, I guess if one were required, you would obtain one.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I guess that's all I would really want to clarify there. And then with these animal, with 700 and some, I think you're over the...
You're talking a water withdrawal, right?
Yeah, as I...
Yes.
From the MPCA, right?
Yes.
So, I think that satisfies that requirement, or if it weren't adequate, I don't believe the permit would be issued. So, I think we can defer to their expertise on that.
This, this doesn't impact, he's a manure management planner. Does he need a new plan, or no, a different plan, or updated plan, amended plan?
Yep, that would all be part of the feedlot permit, so he's adding new animals to all that manure would have to be, areas where that goes would need to be identified.
So, we need a motion to approve the staff analysis and evaluation?
Should you approve, I'm recommending to you two conditions here. The first, the standard condition, that all federal, state, and local laws and regulations be followed. And secondly, that the permit shall obtain all permits required under the Minnesota Animal Feedlot rules prior to commencing construction. And that's, that is a requirement without it being stated here, but this just reinforces that.
Does that cover that water appropriation permit you talked about?
I don't know if that's part of that standard permitting process. It may well be...
We don't have to address it.
We don't administer that program. We're addressing it insofar as we just had a discussion on it, and we are requiring him to follow all state rules as well. But no, I don't believe beyond that, it's like the building code or something else that exists in the state, but we don't administer it.
Very good.
Do you need a motion to approve the findings, Aaron?
First, we need a motion to approve the findings, correct?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the findings. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we'll need a motion if we're...
Okay, I move we recommend approval of this application with the two conditions that are outlined, that you comply with all federal, state, local laws, and that you obtain all permits required under Minnesota Animal Feedlot rules prior to construction.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item of business, approval of the minutes of the March 23, 2017 meeting. Should be included in your packet.
I'd move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I abstain. I was not here.
So do I.
So do I.
Motion carries. Four with three abstentions. Next item. Have all had a chance to look at the zoning permits. That's just for your information. Then I would like to ask, as far as the egg committee, feedlot committee, excuse me, is Holly going to put that together? Is there a time that fits better for the committee?
Who's our committee? Do we want everyone going, or do we want to form a subcommittee of this body?
It's you guys' choice.
I'd recommend that we have the whole body go.
The whole body.
It works for me.
Because that would be... Technically, you'd have a quorum of the planning commission then.
Yeah.
But you'd have a quorum if you have a subcommittee too.
Yeah.
Well, if you had three people, I suppose, but would three be adequate?
Yeah, it would, but you'd have a designated committee, and they were doing official business, you'd still be subject to a committee law.
Right.
For that committee, as you were saying, so it'd be a moot point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's advertised either way.
Right.
Advertised either way, yeah.
Well, hold on though. No, I was going to say, is that the same thing, you know, Fred, maybe outrun you, you know, having a subcommittee to the county... Sorry, Fred. You know, having a subcommittee isn't official designated decision-making, so would you really, correct, so would it, it wouldn't apply to open meeting laws anyway, because they would be bringing it back to the board?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll investigate it whether or not we have to do it tomorrow, but...
Here's my question then. If we have a three-member committee to do the investigation, do we still have to notify the public so they can join the committee for the investigation onsite, or not?
We sort of promised that in the first hearing, though. I heard it.
Right.
That's what they said. We don't do.
Well, but even so, it's the same topic.
Yeah.
And I think the more the public's involved, the better, because they're going to be involved in the end if they don't like it.
Well, there may be some neighbors that want to be there.
As I understand it, the feedlot advisory committee is a public body. It would be a public meeting if that, no matter how many people we put on it.
I think all subcommittees have to have public meetings too, don't they?
But it wouldn't be, it would be a subcommittee to the planning commission, but it's, you know, imagine that you don't have members of the planning commission as the feedlot advisory committee. It doesn't cease being a public body at that point in time. You know, it's as confusing...
But they're not able to take action.
Well, a public meeting in a, in a action-based body would be two different things, right?
Well, I think if they're gathering information for subsequent decisions, it has to be notified.
I think you're right, because with the, with the study committee that we were on, that was supposed to be a public...
No, it was, it was open to the public.
It was open to the public, yeah.
Any meeting is open to the public.
Yeah.
But I guess then, does it, so we advertise it. Is that a big deal? I mean...
I don't think it is necessarily.
You don't think it's required?
I don't think it's a big deal if we had to advertise. It costs the county money to advertise it. Oh, you're pushing it out. That's what you're saying. I see what you're saying. It reduces, it reduces the flexibility, being able to go there. So, what do you think, Fred?
There are several people that were here that are really very interested in what's going on.
Okay.
And it would be, whether you advertise it publicly or not, some of those people should be invited.
Okay.
That's what I think. Believe it or not, the county budget could stay on the advertising. That's not going to break the county on business. I'm sure Dustin will agree with that. But it's, you know, the timeline, if the timeline's impossible, it's impossible. But those people that were here tonight, some of them are really interested. They really should be given the opportunity to be there when there's a site visit, so they hear what's going on.
So, what about this?
That's my read. That's my read.
So?
Well, and, and I guess the other question too, that we should address is, do you want to have it where neighbors are notified, like you would a public hearing, but not necessarily advertised? Well, I'm just saying, you know, advertising, do we need to advertise countywide for a very specific spot? If we just said, hey, we're going to notify all the neighbors within a certain radius if you would like to be here, we're going to meet at this site?
Such a time.
Yeah.
I think if we're going to advertise, we do illegal advertising. I, I'm reluctant to say we're going to pick who we, who we say to.
No, no, but, but like we do for public hearings, you got to notify within a certain radius.
But there's, there's an ordinance that says, this is what you do.
Sure.
And that's within a quarter mile, and it's published here and here, it's in the paper, and that's what takes the time, but I don't think we should select this group and say, we're going to notify them, and not this one. We're going to be in.
Public notice is, public notice on the county website and a piece of paper on the front door good enough? Or do you have to do the newspaper?
Yes.
Well, I, I honestly, I could careless how we do this, but just so we cover our bases, we have a lot of subcommittees with the county, we don't advertise. They're open to the public, you can attend, but we don't advertise.
But we can put it on the website, we can put the sheet on the door.
Right.
We can call some of the closest neighbors that have expressed a concern on it, good enough.
And people, maybe some of the people signed in tonight.
We can't pick and choose, and it's not a subcommittee, so if we happen to make a subcommittee, the planning commission, in certain capacity, it would be a subcommittee to the planning commission, but you're not there in that facility, you're there as the feedlot advisory committee, not a subcommittee. You know, so that's not a, it's a full committee at that point in time.
Now, right. The, I guess the other question is, do you just advertise and don't worry about it?
Right.
You know, I mean?
No, the, the idea, the long-term goal here would be a board of adjustment that has five members, some of which have some feedlot experience, and no feedlot advisory committee at all, at that point in time, it's just a redundancy.
So this is just a temporary thing?
Right, the reason why we, we could go in and try to modify the ordinance right now, but we, we don't want to print off new ordinances just for that one change, we're waiting for the next round. So we had a defensible way to avoid this, but I think, given the interest, it, it makes sense to do the meeting.
Do we just advertise since it's short-term? Cover our bases, whatever?
That's what I would recommend. Then there's no question.
Right.
No issue.
Right, and like Fred said, it's not going to, it's not going to break the county if we advertise, so I mean. Exactly, if I get that.
We're supposed to recommend to them what to do, yeah.
Right, well, I think we'll have to, yeah, if this goes to the board of adjustment instead of us, then.
That'll take care of the issue.
No, no, I don't want the board of adjustment to become the feedlot advisory committee.
Well, what did you just say, like, two minutes ago? You said something about the board of adjustment becoming?
No, they would just increase, and there would be somebody on there who's knowledgeable. We, we want a nice broad representative faction of the county on the board of adjustment, so if there's some people on there who are knowledgeable about feedlots, they no longer need a recommendation from a feedlot advisory committee, they already have that expertise.
Except that right now, the ordinance states that the feedlot advisory committee must, shall, visit the site prior to the variance hearing and file a report for the board of adjustment, and that's in the ordinance right now.
Correct, I'm talking my long, long-term, how we would handle this, but in the short term, I think what we're proposing is correct, we'll, we'll advertise it, we'll, we'll fulfill the process as it's currently written in the ordinance, but we won't fret about how do we do this next time, because within the next six months, our hope is to change things structurally.
We'll have to discuss that, I'm not sure it's a bad policy to have a feedlot advisory committee set up to go out onsite and look and make a report to the board of adjustment. And then if it's made up of planning commission members, then those people would already have been out to the site, and they could add more to the discussion at the public hearing.
Or do you have it as a, a few from the planning commission, maybe a few from the board of adjustment and the zoning administrator, you know, I mean, get them?
Yeah, right now, it's set up that the planning commission is a feedlot advisory, so, and so if it was going to change it, that would have to be a board action. But you might want to wait to get more people on the, if you do put more people on the board of adjustment, especially if they have an ag background.
Right.
Are we going to advertise this meeting?
And then is it going to be all of us?
That's.
You just said that the planning commission is?
Right now, right, right now, that's the way it is.
Is the feedlot committee.
Right now.
That would be all of us.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll open it or advertise and have a special meeting?
All right, so you need to advertise.
It takes 10 days.
So Holly, if it was advertised on Monday, what's the soonest that we? Yes. So then, if you advertise, it comes out on Tuesday, so then when could we go to the site?
It's Wednesday.
Okay, okay. Okay, so when, when then could we go to the site? 10 days from then? So we would have time, if you advertise it on Monday, next week's paper. If you had it next week's paper, we could go.
So you just want to advertise it as a site visit by the feedlot advisory?
Yeah.
One last question, is it, is it for sure 10 days? Because we ran through this with the, the county board, and there was something, Fred, maybe you remember, that was only three days.
Right, I recall that. But I know what you're talking about, Justin.
Because we just did something where it was really quick.
For a site visit, right.
And we said, oh, it's 10 days, and then Cheryl looked it up, and she's like, no, it's actually only three days.
We'll look into it tomorrow, but we can get the 10 days if we have to, if it's a three days, we have a little more flexibility.
Right, right, yeah.
Are we going to set a date tonight, or is it just going to be, here's the date, and who can make it makes it?
Okay, is there any merit in listing what we need to investigate in the next 10 days? So we have the answers.
I think Aaron can put that together, all right, from our discussions tonight?
Quite a bit of it, Aaron, was highlighted on the findings.
Well, a lot of it, in the amended staff reports, everything in red there is what I'm looking for, but a lot of that's going to be me working with Darren to get his feedlot applications in. Most, most counties don't permit people to approach in this manner, they require the feedlot permit first, and that makes them pay, I mean, they have to spend a sizable amount of money before they have any assurity that they're going to be able to move forward. And it seems like perhaps an unfair scheme, and that, you know, if they do that, they design it for a site, and then, you know, variance isn't granted, you just spent all the money on engineering plans that have to be re-engineered, so we. Right, so I mean, that's the other side of that, so that's why most counties say that's simply the cost of doing business in the future, I might approach it that way, I didn't this time. It's highlighting some of the flaws and trying to be more flexible. You know, I still think it's, there's some merit either way, I don't think it's as clear cut as many folks do it. But now I'm waiting for him to get some more information from him.
There are some very specific requirements for doing this in a karst region, you, you read all that on the website, on the state website, and, and they, it's 300 animals or less, it's 300 animals to 500 animals, it's 500 animals to 1,000, they got, they got requirements for each group, yeah.
And I'm working closely with the PCA regional rep on this one.
Yeah. The rules are very specific for a karst region, yeah.
I, I believe they might be.
It also addresses if it's, if, if the animal numbers don't meet a certain level, but the manure storage pit does, doesn't matter how many animals, then it's based on the pit.
Yeah, that, that's the tricky part here, so we, if.
Because he doesn't have enough animals for certain levels, but his pit does.
If he's a thousand animal unit capacity in that pit, the county won't even be issuing the permit, it would go right to the state, it would be a NIPD's permit. We'd still need the COP, but in terms of the feedlot parts, the state would be handling that, because it's, that passes the threshold where they take over. I don't know that there's a lot of. Yeah, I don't know if he has to.
There's no animals on site or anything anyways. There's no, there's no livestock on site right now anymore.
So what is?
He's not, nothing to get ready, I mean, we go see the site?
Yeah, I mean, the faster we get information from him, the quicker we can analyze it, but the site visits primarily to let people actually see, so they can put ground, actual area to, to the ideas he's. We have to do it that way, right? I don't think we, I don't think we notify property owners, because we do that. Because that's a specific requirement for a COP, but. I don't, I guess I don't see a harm in it, if, if we wanted to do that, we're talking about whether or not we notify property owners.
I guess I would just cover your bases that way, so they know, like you said, if they don't get the paper or whatever, then.
Yeah.
And then you, you don't ever hear them come back and say, well, I was never notified, I would like to have been there, right?
You're right. So we're set?
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud. Are you going to contact everybody with regard to that training session after our next meeting?
Yes.
That may want to go?
Wait, wait, what training session?
That's the one over by St. Cloud? Okay, go where else? Okay, never mind, people.
Okay, I was, I was, yeah.
Done. I guess I can't get up and leave until we've got a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.